So we are, you can come in now. Alright, I'm going to call the October 28th of the Grand City Council of Orange Councilwoman Sykes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
President.
Councilwoman Myers.
President.
Councilwoman Pauling.
President.
Councilwoman Delian.
President.
Councilwoman Brady.
President.
Councilwoman Aboski.
Here.
Councilwoman McFie.
President.
Councilwoman Hay. President. Members please rise and like a tax stamp at six thirty. Do you know?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the right to speak.
Thank you. With that, we have completed our nominations for the 2019 Princeton Cross Country City Championship. Councilwoman Gray. And while you're doing that, the police and firemen committee have a video on your truck here. I apologize for my fire code. We're above the person's limits, so try to get through some of these citations and then I'll...
We have a bunch of, a bunch of jeans on here, cross-country related. I was hoping maybe I could have a long-time fortunate friend, Nicole Renshaw, up here helping. I was fortunate enough to... I was fortunate enough to go to high school with Nicole. She was a standout athlete, cross-country runner herself. She motivated me to go out every day, so I know the passion and enthusiastic attitude she brings to the street, here in yellow. So great job, Nicole. First one is actually to you. You and Councilwoman August can hand out the rest as we go. Is this... Kiana Hezle? This is the city championship for winning the middle school girls' cross-country city championship. Julia Siposhka? Abigail Lee. Julia Powell. Emily Ndu. Valentina Pedrazo. Giovanna Van Helden. Lumiana Fendergast. Mia Cienecimo. Mia Flugel. Amelia Ruiro. Julianne Inus. Julia Rock. Evan Lee. This, uh, this is the next award is for the boys' cross-country team for winning the city championship also. You want to take a picture of this girl? Next name is Randy Stitt. Matthew Pitt. Jesse Wayne. Benjamin McDally. Alonzo Barker Sharp. Jacob Hynrum. Patrick McDonald. Alain De Brue. Andrew Daniel Fendergast. Henry Fendergast. Logan Mazzia. Daniel Judge. Keith Martes. Posen Mirko. Chief Lorenz. Jack Zucarsin. Nicky O'Leary. And Tony LaRosa. Superman Tom. And Julia Colmichin. Of course, there are some individual city championships awards. Would you like to present that now also or opening? Cross-country team is winning individual city championship. Anytime possible, some serious congratulations to Patrick McDonough. City team, Patrick McDonough again. The rest of the city team, Jack Lorenz. The city team, all city teams. Okay, we'll hold off and take a picture of these guys, okay? Henry Fendergast. Our city boys, the Brooklyn State Green. Logan Johnson from Atlanta. Quick, Angelina. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, cross-country girls and individual women's. Cross-country girls, Amy Zane. Kiana Hezle. Abigail Lee for city. Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations, Abigail, for the coach from Washington, come up here with the last sermon. As I call his names, please come up, Kevin Gillan. Jake Manow. Brandon Miller. Brooke Ray. Abigail Nelson. And Rachel Gennert. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much once again. We appreciate your coming out today. Congratulations.
I'm gonna take a five-minute recess to one hour each, too.
Five-minute recess.
Next, we have a proclamation, October 28th, 2019, the headless history day, the first school, R.I.P. Nicholas Spohs.
Hello, my name is Mary Spohs. I'm fourteen-year-old. I live in Princeton in the central suburbs of Princeton. I go to school at Mary Street, Princeton Avenue, and I'm looking with epilepsy condition, epilepsy. I was sent here to help when I got diagnosed with epilepsy. The doctors were set up to put that on my way. When I came back to school after I got diagnosed, it was really difficult to get the work finished in school class because I had seizures. And teachers wouldn't even notice. And if they don't notice, they don't know to go with the blessing. And not getting the work done really affected my grades. This is why I feel it is, it is very important to have education about epilepsy schools, not just for the nurses and teachers, but students also. So for example, if someone has a seizure in class or in the hallway, the students need to know how to handle the situation. As a teen living with epilepsy, I feel it makes me safer that people know about epilepsy, so they know what to do if they are near me and I have seizures. As you may know, the average class size is about twenty-six students. However, something you may not have known is that one in twenty-six people have epilepsy, and one in ten people have a seizure in their lifetime. In actuality, eleven thousand people know that I'm living with epilepsy. Now, even though I have epilepsy, it doesn't help without advocacy for people living with epilepsy. As a random teen advocate for epilepsy in Princeton last spring, I went to Washington D.C. with teams from other U.S. schools to learn more about epilepsy and to talk to the federal legislators and ask for a lucky five million dollars for CDC to do research. We got it. Tonight, I am here for two reasons. One, to ask for an epilepsy awareness day in Princeton, and two, to ask that all nurses, teachers, and students in Princeton schools get educated about epilepsy. Thank you for your time, and I hope this speech doesn't be a hack.
So I have some news for you. I have a proclamation I want to make. Proclaiming October 28th, 2019, as Make Epilepsy History Day. Be resolved, whereas Make Epilepsy History Day is an effort of the Epilepsia Foundation in Wingland to raise awareness about and change the conversation around epilepsy and seizures to engage everyone in the fight to make epilepsy history, as well as to improve and save the lives in care, advocacy, research, and new therapy and education. And whereas epilepsy is a disorder of the brain characterized by recurrent and uncontrolled seizures that can affect anyone at any age, at any time, whereas approximately 3.4 million people in the USA, in 14,000 people around, live with epilepsy and seizure. Whereas, while many treatments are approved to treat seizures, thirty to forty percent with epilepsy still live with uncontrolled seizures despite multiple treatment trials. And whereas epilepsy can affect anyone at any time, whereas acting together on Make Epilepsy History Day and during other awareness initiatives, including International Epilepsy Day, National Epilepsy Awareness Month, Brain Awareness Week, any other day of the year, we must increase public knowledge about epilepsy and seizure first aid and change the way people think about epilepsy and seizures. Now, therefore, we hereby proclaim, October 28th, 2019, Make Epilepsy History Day, impers all Princeton residents to take action together and make epilepsy history. We hereby send our sentences against the seal, October 28th, 2019, signed by Mayor Al Fung, Council President Montefiore, and the rest of the Grand City Council. And for that, of course, we have a citation for you on behalf of the Grand City Council. Thank you so much. Mercy, those words are very true words. Epilepsy can affect anyone at any age. My father, last year, was working at a foreign job in the Princeton library. He slipped and fell on his head. And when the fire brigade came to him, he assumed that, you know, he's an older man and probably just had a mission fell on his head. When we went through the neurology, we found out that he had epilepsy. He had a random seizure that's been alive since. So then, about six weeks, we figured out that he had epilepsy. He probably had it for a long time. He was living with minor seizures, minor issues for years until they realized. So Mercy, you are correct. It can affect anyone at any age. Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for being here. Public hearing. This section of the meeting is open to any comments on adopted habits. Name and address to the right.
Council President, Council John Debona, attorney with the office of common. Where anyone have to have in Princeton, I'm here on the, on the chase project.
Just by the way, that's my dad in my shirt.
I thought it was about these that did it.
I'll be brief, Mr. President. You were here at the ordinance committees. I just want to go over a few things. The issues that you have on the project. I'm representing Oakland Development LLC, Nancy Caputo, Captain's principles, the gambling regarding the Chase Bank proposal, 175 out of Adam. As you noted in the presentation before the public works ordinance committees on October 17th, before the public works committee was a resolution for the abandonment of a lot of street. As was mentioned at that meeting, requiring with the city is when you propose to abandon the street, you have to get the street appraised by, an appraiser on the city's list. We did that with Peter and Scotty. If this ordinance and the others are granted, the city will receive a payment based upon the appraisals, $194,500. In addition, here for zone change of B1, C3 for the properties that make up the, would make up the Chase Bank, and also there's a comprehensive plan amendment for some of those lots. If all of these are approved, there will be an administrative subdivision and a merger of the lots in question. We're asking for approval this evening. And Alan Roxhill, the four states group, who's engineering the project, also has been in the landscape plan at the meeting. The traffic was an issue. Traffic engineers from the management, the patient, the agency, that case, or any questions we have against those, we have plans here. And we're asking for your approval of the resolution, of the road abandonment and the zone change and the concrete plan.
And also, the public speaking, any doctor, residents.
Evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening. John Maitzke, on behalf of B.C. Store LLC, and his attorney, Johnson, that 56 High Street, Robbins. I'm here to speak in respect to the Plating 8-19-06. It's a petition filed by a petitioner in respect to amendment to the existing ordinance which created at 95th Avenue, a mixed-use development. This project has been part of a process that has been phased with commercial building, self-story building. We're here this evening on the final phase of the project, which is the construction of commercial units as part of the end use of this ultimate project. We've received planning board approval. It's also received government planning commission review approval before the ordinance committee, and had the ordinance committee review this project as well. I'm available as our engineers, PhD are available, should any council members have any questions or concern about, about the project. The ordinance quickly, essentially does three things. It essentially clarifies the existing sizes of buildings on site now, determining the total performance of what has been built. It secondly addresses the uses... It secondly addresses the uses. It does so with clarity. The past ordinance did have some issues with respect to what the uses were and how they were being permitted. And that is finally come to fruition. And it also eliminates any issue with respect to signage. We're not proposing any signage. Essentially puts an end to that. This is our final phase, final development. And we have no intention of coming back other than a ribbon cutting ceremony. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Attorney General. And would you like to speak on any document?
Hi, good evening. Robert Wilson, 114 May 5th. I'm just here for the document matter under Councilmember Communications. Under Councilman Reed, says you are of status of noticed measurement issues. As possibly, would like to respectfully request if it would be possible to discuss that now. If not, we can wait.
Any objections to the rest of the council here? I see no objection. First approval.
A couple of updates. The yard works were slated as usual for to go ahead third violation of the temporary structures on the property. I do with a $2,400 fine that they were slated for. And there's a court order put in place that they can no longer put any additional structures on that property. That's one part of it. Also, we did have our noise monitoring. Companies submit to the city to report on their findings. And we have said it, we have also for a noise violation under the noise ordinance. And Mr. Reddick here, supposed to be Reddick here, is still pursuing the process of superiority.
Councilman Robinson, question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you know, is there any way to have access to the noise measurement? The theory I guess study that...
Exit.
Okay, definitely that that is public information.
I would say it's public information, but okay, it's the council. It's going to be presented as evidence at trial and this report. So I wouldn't say it's public, but I can give it to the council right now.
So it's something that we've posted in the editor's diary?
I would say no, not until it's heard across. But I don't want...
And for Mr. Wilson?
I just wanted to also say thank you again very much to the council, to the administration for taking the time to listen to us and be receptive to what we have to say and to having finished decimal testing and everything else. And also, as far as taking the matter further into court, we're grateful for that. And I want to say thank you as well to everyone. And we look forward to being contacted shortly in any way that we could help about that as well. So, thank you all very much. And see you next conference, folks. Thank you, have a good night.
You too, Mr. Wilson. Any other public to speak on any matters? Seeing none, that second meeting is now closed. Moving on to the resolution this evening. We're going to report for many, finance committee, councilway president.
Thank you, welcome, Council President. Finance committee, that with regards to initially 9-19-04, ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the Rhode Island Laborers District Council, 1322 trade schedule, unit July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020 contract. Introduce pursuant to trial of such an 11.0 or 2.1. This passed the committee, I had heard, passage here.
Is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion second, under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we had a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements passed unanimously, committee had heard its passage here.
Is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll. Approve the resolution authorizing the date of happening.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Councilor Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilor Rogers?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor Duggan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor Havelos?
Yes.
Councilor McRae?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we had a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. Those passed unanimously as well, had heard its passage here.
Motion to approve? And motion second?
Second.
Motion second, under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll on the tax.
Yes.
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 Next, we have the tax interest waiver approvals passed unanimously.
Is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll on the tax.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I believe I skipped the tangible tax abatements.
On the day, motion to approve again?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll on the annual taxes.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Councilor Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilor Rogers?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor Duggan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor Havelos?
Yes.
Councilor McRae?
Yes.
Yes.
And then next, we had the tax interest waiver denials also passed unanimously.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And motion second, under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll on the tax.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Councilor Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilor Rogers?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor Duggan?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Next, we had a tax assessment order review decisions as of December 31, 2017, Director Strom to report on the property zone by concern.
Thank you. This represents 27 occupants, all vacant lots. It was assessed by our tax assessor and the deserving company monitored or appealed. They went before the Board of Tax Assessor and reviewed. The board decided to reduce the dollars by about 20% based upon non-pro sales. And so, that's why I say the reduction. But it's a board assessment review that decided it's based on the customer.
Councilor Stiles? Was the assessment done by vision appraisal or by the tax assessor?
Well, it's done through the jurisdiction of the tax assessor. With the information visionary established.
I guess my question is, they were assessed like all other projects in the same manner as others?
So they decided to appeal it to the board.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Director Strom. Public Works Committee, for the whole resolution of the abandonment of a block of street until we get to the two ordinances. You only have to keep track of them all once. So, we're not the ordinance committee, councilway president, committee here.
Do you want to go out of order? Or just watch you, or just go?
We'll just do the two that don't relate to Chase. And once we get to the block street, do all the other ones.
Because then we'll skip, we had two prior to the lot. I'll skip those.
No, that's...
Okay, I'll do that then. First, Nada Drur, 8-19-04, ordinance in amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32.570, according to the city of Princeton, 2005. Title Motor Vehicle was in traffic Kenwood, two hour parking, sponsored by Councilmember Donigan, co-sponsored by Councilmember McCauley. This passed, I believe, as it's subject to the traffic report that...
On the day, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
And motion second, under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Councilor Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilor Rogers?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor Duggan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor Havelos?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Next, we had 7-19-03, ordinance in amendment of Chapter 15.12, according to the city of Princeton, 2005, entitled Housing Standards Creating the Princeton News and Pass Force, sponsored by Councilor Marcus Vargas. And then all of, everyone, other members joined in. It was amended and passed and the committee had heard its passage here.
Motion to approve?
And motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Councilor Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilor Rogers?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor Duggan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor Havelos?
Yes.
Councilor McRae?
Yes.
Yes.
On our back, the resident who authorized the abandonment of a block street, council, currently the block, currently the block.
Yes, I believe this council president, as you guys know, I mean, I have to recuse myself of my real kind of business relationship with the yard works. So if there's any question, I have to recuse myself in the process.
So for the record, for our council, our applause is to accuse himself from the block street abandonment ordinance pending at 7-19-4, 7-19-5.
Are we sticking with the ordinance, council?
We'll stick with Public Works, who chaired that in my absence. Councilman Hoffman, would you comment?
Yes.
If you want to talk about the resolution, what's our, what's our amendment?
Thank you, President. Yes, the resolution passed in committee.
Resolution to abandon the block street, back then? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? And motion second, under discussion of the amendment? Councilway president, committee here.
Yes, thank you, Council President. One of the issues that came up was the purchase price that's attached to this abandonment. I believe it's $194,000, which represents, after some research, it represents about 12 years' worth of taxes that would have been paid on all of the properties involved in that section. So, $194,500. So, we are getting a substantial amount upfront just for the value of the street abandonment, which equates to 12 years' worth of taxes for the entire property.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Stiles, would you say your hand up?
Yes, at the committee hearing, I raised the issue of the bank putting solar panels on the roof. They were willing to agree to that. I wonder if that was discussed?
Should we ask them now, or wait for the ordinance?
Oh, I was going to ask them now.
Through the chair, through the developer, Councilman Stiles has requested the ordinance committee that solar panels be put on the roof. That's understood.
Not as high.
Councilman Stiles, yes?
All right, in that case, I'll offer an amendment to the abandonment ordinance, adding on line 49. The amendment would say the petitioner shall also install enough solar panels on any newly constructed building on the property or adjacent property to generate the building's annual electricity usage.
Second, add a motion, and a second. Councilmember Hawkins?
Thank you, President. Believe me, I'm not opposed to solar panels. And I would like to see them installed throughout the city if they're done properly. I think it's a good idea. But in this case, I think we're getting into a dangerous territory when we get a company that's willing to come in and take an abandoned property that's been vacant for God knows how many years. And they're going to spend millions of dollars to fix it up and then to ask them to put some solar panels on the roof after they've done all their work. I just think is not good for this particular project.
Councilor Brady, Councilmember McRae, and Councilmember Hawkins?
Although I also agree with the settlement of Councilman Stiles, I agree with Councilman Hopkins. I think, you know, we're asking a company to come in and invest $4 million plus into the project in, you know, an area. First of all, I'm not sure if legal. I guess we'd have to ask the attorneys. But obviously, there should be initiatives to encourage businesses to use solar energy for the environment. I just don't think we should require any visiting to the city to do so.
Councilway president?
Thank you, Council President. I looked in, I looked at this subsequent to the hearing as well. And one of the things is that there's no science behind even requesting this, even if it were legal. I don't believe that we have the authority to impose this restriction on one developer. I don't think we can impose it on anyone else. But the science doesn't match up. And I know our planning department has a lot of information on this. But we have, I would say, maybe 20,000 to 25,000 structures in the entire city. And even if you put solar panels on every one of our structures, you'd be about 50,000 sure of powering the whole city up with solar power. So, there's just no science and math behind it to back it up. It's a great goal. It's something I think we should do. But as I said in committee, as the technology gets better, then you may be able to, you know, create smaller solar panels that generate far more electricity. And until there, that's done and it's affordable, I don't see how we can impose that kind of a restriction. And especially on a small building like this. I'm told that, you know, if you don't have 50,000 square feet of panels, you're not generating a heck of a lot of electricity. So I just think that it's wrong on a number of counts, especially the fact that I don't think we have the authority to even impose it. So I would oppose the amendment. I think tax incentives for technological advancement are the way to generate new forms of renewable energy, not trying to dictate that, you know, an existing business or a new business try to do it while the building, their structure.
Councilor Hawkins? Two parts. First, I think that going forward, this is something that we should look after all in construction within the city. We're going to seriously start to take on climate change. We need to start to look at these big initiatives and this is, these are the kind of big changes that we need to come from and take on. But, now to put the Mr. Kirschbaum or Mr. Reddick on the spot, do you have a legal opinion on the legality of this amendment?
Just, you know, for... So through the chair, through the solicitor. Can we, then ordinance require that someone do something, not lay it to you?
No.
That was pretty fast, no?
Now, okay. You may. Again, I know I'm putting you on the spot. But is your opinion on that because this is, you know, a one-off instance? Or would that be, do you feel that would be the same going forward if it was codified into, you know, code that new construction going forward had to? I think it has to be out of five. I think there has to be some kind of reason why we're signaling out Chase Bank for solar panels versus any other, but I don't think it should be a requirement. It's not a requirement for abandonment, which is what this particular amendment seeks to modify. So it's really not even rational related to what the developer's trying to do. So for a lot of reasons, I'll stay with the comment.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Stiles, your call.
Yeah. Well, I think that this corporation is one of the wealthiest corporations in the world. So they can certainly afford to put solar panels in the world, so they can certainly afford to put solar panels on the roof of a branch office in Cranston or Rattler. It's not gonna really bother them at all. Uh, the, the second thing is that I think we, we have the right, this is our property, and we have the right to sell it for what we wanna sell for. I mean, we have to, under the law, we have to do appraisal, and we have to get at least the appraised value, but the reason I'm, uh, attempting to attach this amendment to this section is because this is ours, this is something we're selling, and, uh, I think the price that we should sell this for is the hundred ninety thousand plus the, uh, requirement that there be solar panels on the roof. I think we have to take, uh, steps like this, or the alternatives are these massive solar farms that I think most of us realize are, are a mistake, uh, in our city, and, uh, or agreeing that we're just gonna destroy the planet and our grandchildren are gonna be in one hell of a mess. So, it's a very small step, I know that, but, uh, I think we, we do have the right to set a price on our, on something we're selling, and there should be part of the price.
Councilman McCallis.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I understand, uh, Councilmember Stiches' concerns for the planet. I don't know if we should do this on a single basis, Steve, I think we're better off, uh, coming up with something, like you said, that'll avoid the big solar farms and work on something that, um, will make the city of Cranston a better, friendlier, eco place to live. I think we have to sit down and, and really work on some kind of resolution or ordinance to come up with something. I don't think now is the time to single out one individual company, though, to, uh, to mandate this.
Thank you.
Councilor McCallis, your call, Councilmember.
Um, given Mr. Kirshenbaum's, uh, opinion, um, I'm gonna vote against the amendment, not because I'm against the idea, but because of the, the legal opinion. With that said, um, I think this, this is something that we should do going forward, and I know the planning director is in the room, and I'd love to work together, Councilman Stiches, and Mr. Kirshenbaum, to try and codify this idea into, into code going forward, so we can start to take on some of these challenges.
Look, I mean, if this is a priority for the city, you've got a number of ways that the city can do this legally, and not just, uh, based upon how much money someone receives someone has. Uh, it's always fun to spend other people's money, but, um, we can't do that in this country, not yet at least. But, uh, what I would propose is, maybe we can do tax incentive programs, maybe we could do some kind of incentive program, uh, based upon, uh, a green incentive program, we have jobs incentive, building incentive, I don't think we'd be wanting to do some kind of incentive program like that to make people, uh, want to, uh, do that, uh, naturally.
Councilor Brady.
Uh, I would agree with Mr. Kirshenbaum's point, and, uh, the discussion should be in a taxing center to encourage businesses to go solar, uh, 'cause I also, like Councilman Stiches, don't necessarily agree that we should be building farms and residential. However, um, like we said in committee, watching this particular space be vacant for twenty-five plus years, I don't think it's necessarily a theater to single them up and, and require that, and I also think it sets a precedent to other businesses that might want to give a glance at that we're not the easiest to deal with, which I'm not sure, you know, we wanna start to set. That being said, I appreciate the conversation, and, you know, I think that, you know, we could definitely work around an incentive to maybe the city of Cranston a little more lean and to encourage it, but, um, you know, I, like I said, a committee applaud this business for coming into the city of Cranston, spending four plus million dollars, cleaning up an area, buying, uh, six plus properties, and, uh, I know how hard this deal was to put together, so, you know, I, I encourage it, I look forward to this bank coming to our state, I thank them for their...
Further discussion? Yes, Council President.
Just very quickly, yeah, I, I certainly, as I said, I certainly favor tax incentive methods of, of obtaining some technological advancement and, uh, projects like this, but I think we should listen to the science, and I think our planning department has a lot of knowledge with regard to this, so the feasibility is an issue. Uh, I just want everyone to understand that, if you talk to planning, you, you learn pretty quickly that, um, the technology has, hasn't arrived where it's gonna be that simple, so I think we need to listen to them as well, uh, before we make any decisions.
Before I get back to Councilman Stiches, if anyone still wants to, Councilor McCallis, then before I get to Councilman Stiches, I agree that we should think of conscientious uses of solar, which our companies in the city should work together elaborately to find spots where it could potentially go. But I will sit here and tell you now, the only person who's really qualified to decide if solar is your own top ability, if the director of planning, uh, he is the train to understand what's going on top of the roof, what can go on top of the roof, uh, what the exact system will look like, how to look to break with the operations of the building, and to sit here and change a law to support some of the solar grant on top of the roof, which way down we can go for it doesn't date the best, and I think if we've got something the city wants to do, we should work with the planning department to develop ordinances that say, depending on the size of your building, the scope of your build-out, the roof apparatus going on your building, you need to think about putting in solar, and here's the incentive we're going in here, you should do it, I think it's a, it's a good piece of legislation to just put it in an abandonment, it just doesn't seem like it's the right, uh, Councilmember Stiches.
Yes, uh, in light of the council comments, I was drawing on them.
Yeah, there's no problem. Further discussion abandoned Washington, Councilor McCallis.
Um, thank you. Still getting used to having them, but, um, Councilman Stiches brought up in the committee, uh, the fact that they're, we are gonna be losing, of course, willingly there some homes, we are losing some, some units, um, I don't know if anyone else on the council has had a chance to, to read through the housing works, or have a back book that's put out late last week, but according to their statistics, uh, the annual income needed to affordly purchase a median-priced home in Cranston is seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the median household in, in Cranston, I think, is sixty-four thousand. So, losing housing units is a significant issue, and I'm wondering, um, if the kid, if this body has, um, any willingness to earmark some of the money that we're gonna receive through the abandonment towards something like the C-CAB Cranston Systems Program, or, um, in the Community Development, uh, Department area, I believe they have some funds for purchasing properties to develop for, uh, affordable housing. Um, so I guess I would, I would make the motion to amend the resolution on line forty-nine to earmark the, uh, the proceeds from this abandonment to the C-CAB Cranston Systems Program.
Yeah, I don't believe we can earmark proceeds from the sale of this property, Director Carillo, Director Strong, Attorney's, I want to get, I'm pretty sure we can't direct, I think we can ask budget amendment to take funds that we can plan to purchase, but I'm not sure we can earmark, uh, we're not here for that. I think I'm clear about what we're gonna do, it's a significant reason we can't do the, uh, the other law for solar, I'm pretty sure we can just, we can take what the funds go on and sell the property.
That's correct, we have to be direct with the process, that's, uh, you can't just earmark money, because you're the C-CAB Cranston Systems.
Yes, so we have to pass some kind of resolution for amendment budget in some way that allows funds to be put into a different account.
I was like, but I, I don't agree with you on this.
I know you don't. I know that the situation doesn't agree, we're just trying to establish that it's the wrong way to do it.
As, as the, as Mr. Kirshenbaum mentioned, it's still gonna be, uh, how to balance it as an asset to the city.
People and we should, yeah.
Right. Because it's basically a motion.
Yes, because we're changing the man for capital, whatever. Councilmember Brady.
Um, I certainly understand, you know, you have that, um, but also, John, I would say that's a good point, uh, showing the median income is fourteen dollars, dollars less, um, shows that we obviously have some, that's something else we have to work on, it's the advantage of this money, more for the loss, and I don't necessarily agree that it's here this developer who's giving these properties probably move all over their houses at the price, and, 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 uh, some of their homes are probably pretty happy, but that being said, we do raise a good point, but I don't want to argue with you on that.
Thank you. Councilman Stiches.
Uh, just, I'm not sure about this, but, yeah, maybe something that Mr. Strong in your nose or could check. I believe when we sell property, that the proceeds have to go to retire them, is that familiar?
I think there's a couple categories, uh, constant, you know, you can do that as well as, I hear, maybe some of our debt service that we have, but, uh, you don't have to do that as long as you're making proper payments on that stress as well. But that is a, you're listening, possible, yeah. Like, I would much rather see something like that happen than putting it into a, an account that's a topical one, type of category.
Any further questions, Councilmember McCallis? A visual panel from Washington, yes. See number one, please take the call.
Councilor Stiches?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Councilor McCallis?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Yes.
Back to the ordinance, the ordinances. Seven dash nineteen dash zero four, ordinance amending the comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten, March Atwood Chase Bank, petition filed by Oak Lawn Development LLC, this passed in committee and I urge passage here.
Motion approved. Second. Motion, second, on discussion. See number one, please take the call.
Councilor Stiches?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Councilor, uh, Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have seven dash nineteen dash zero five, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning, change of zone, March Atwood Chase Bank, petition filed by Oak Lawn Development LLC, this also passed in committee and I urge passage here.
Motion approved. Second. That motion is second, on discussion. See number one, please take the call. Oops, sorry, Councilway President.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I just wanna say, we, we had a very lengthy meeting, uh, ordinance on this, and I wanna thank the, the developer and all of the experts that appeared, uh, and gave us a very extensive, uh, plan of what's going, going to happen there. Uh, I think it's a very good project, uh, I think it's gonna create some buffer for the, for the other residences that are there, and I think it's, uh, you know, it's a win-win for the city, it's gonna create not only twelve years of, uh, income upfront from the taxes, but it's gonna create a tax base, a commercial tax base. One of the things that didn't come out in the committee, and I think Councilman Stiches asked the question, excuse me, um, this property will also be, uh, taxed at the commercial rate rather than the residential rate, so it's already ten dollars per thousand higher, and it's gonna be subs, obviously substantially more in value than I think the, the five houses that are, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilway President. Further discussion? See number one, please take the call.
Councilor Stiches?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Those who cast, next, we have eight dash nineteen dash zero six, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning nine fifty Phoenix Avenue, commercial use, petition filed by DCPF Store Development LLC, passed in committee, urge passage here.
Motion approved, second. That motion is second, on discussion. See number one, please take the call.
Councilor Stiches?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. As a script is error, the law will pass special community in your error, as the rule of nine dash nineteen.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, ordinance amendment of title ten point three-two, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled owner vehicles in traffic, Puritan and Standard Streets, three-way stop, granted by Councilmember Duncan. Passed in committee.
Motion approved. Second. Discussion, see number one, please take the call.
Um, sorry, I'm gonna reach for my paper. I think it came up pretty early.
We'll just finish this one up here. That motion approved, second. Discussion, see number one, please take the call.
Councilor Stiches?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
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 Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Use the claims, uh, so, uh, claims committee, because you just have way, Council, the chairman of all.
Informational purposes only, sir.
Thank you. Holy hearings, over to any management coming forward to the city, it's the most chance to give a session that we need to hear. Go forward, Congress. Okay, motion, please, now, go. Legend of city additions, uh, quality farm and memory equipment, term expires July eighth point four, I received a request that, uh, is the farm be, uh, reported, so back forth, where you're from, okay, motion approved.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion is second, on discussion. See number one, please take the call.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Hafouskas?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor McPhee?
Yes.
Councilor McCallis?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. For city officers, status of slash man, what, uh, the director of the authority or director of the administration, they're still there.
I spoke to the director of the authority, and, uh, at this time, he does not believe that this script will occasion him what we want as slash act, that we some work ends in identifying, uh, who you want to push that.
Okay, so I would ask, uh, Councilor Duncan, if you could contact director of the authority, if there were cases that you would have a warning to us.
Yeah, thank you, but that's, uh, let me put it on, I'm, uh, a bit surprised by that, uh, I had different, different people from numerous conversations with the director of the authority on this.
That was my conversation with him today, and that's, uh, I don't know. Something's changed between what you spoke to, you know, for, so.
Okay, I'll call tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
First commission, those of you who know, starting first commission, they've been about four times since part of that, uh, resolution, there is an update, we've done the first one in, this is October, so we have this this evening, the chairman of that committee, Susan Raisin, and the co-chair, David. And this evening, and forward, starting first commission, I know, uh, meetings, I know, a lot of, uh, big conferences.
Good evening, uh, Council President, good evening, members of the council. Uh, David and I have presented an initial report, uh, which was into docket, so hopefully you've had a chance to review the initial findings of the commission. Uh, the report contains, you know, some initial preliminary work results to this point, which I think, um, has been very successful, um, but rather than repeat the contents of the report, um, at this point, David and I will be happy to address any, uh, questions you have, or by your participation on any of the individual, um, items that were contained in the report.
Over to any questions, people not on the commission, first, uh, the, uh, not myself, Councilmember Hopkins, Councilor Vargas, who are there, S W B, so the members, who are not members of the commission, we should ask questions to the chairman. Council, Councilmember McCallis.
Uh, thank you, Council President, Director, I just wanna thank, thank both of you for the, the hard work and effort you're putting into this commission, um, I'm already hearing , uh, great results, I, I did read your, uh, your, uh, report, and I commend it, and I, um, I will be supporting it in any way possible in the future. I apologize, I haven't made a meeting myself yet, I will do that in the near future, it's been a bit hectic, uh, as a plea.
You're welcome to come.
Well, I thank you. Well, I thank you.
Does every member of the council sign up for the diversity training on November fifth? Seth, thank you, Councilmember Doris. Uh, you should have received an email from Director Cox, uh, from the library regarding the ability for the council members to take the diversity training, if they want the training, it will be four versus one seven. Uh, if that's something you would like to do, and see that email, please let Director Cox know. Uh, so you may thank Councilor Sykes, so I'm assuming you don't know about it.
So, we need, we need to sign up, is it?
Yes, he's the head count for the, uh, for the event, and I may have, I may even have to prepare for, it's all day event, and things like that. So, if you want to go and you haven't, tell him I recommend shooting him a quick email tonight or tomorrow morning, to let him know that you will be attending. Councilor Sykes.
Yeah, a question on the report. Uh, it says that there's an announcement by Mayor Pung, and he is recommending changing the EMT cardiac license requirement from a pre-employment requirement to a post-employment requirement for the next firefighter recruitment. Could you explain that a little bit, how that's going to work?
Sure. This was a very, um, well, it was a very contentious, uh, issue, generally, the last day at some of the, um, commission meetings, uh, basically the way the city of Cranston, uh, runs the application process, uh, an applicant must possess the EMT cardiac license when they're hired. They must have that, um, training and testing complete. Other municipalities, we have learned, uh, don't require the applicant to possess that, um, license when they apply, rather after they're hired, they're given a certain period of, six months or a year to, uh, to obtain that certification. So, after a lot of debate, research, and collaboration, uh, I think the mayor, um, recognized that perhaps it is a barrier to, um, some people applying, and he, um, again, he's recommending that that be changed, but probably the next file or improvement will be after his term ends, so it's a recommendation from the mayor that is from.
Hi, Mayor. It's really, I think, a barrier as well, because the training itself is about two thousand dollars, so, you know, for minority community, people, that becomes a real barrier. Although there is a loan program, it's better if it's not after, as far as we have the nerve.
Well, uh, couldn't that just be done with a personnel rule, uh, that could be, that we could consider now, rather than waiting for the next improvement?
We haven't, um, discussed that as a means of accomplishing that, that goal, but perhaps that could be a way to accomplish this, um, goal.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I'd be interested in, in the committee's opinion on that, and did you look at, at, did the mayor and all look at, uh, is that going to be additional cost for the city, or how will that work?
It's going to, it's going to be post, uh, post-hire, so once the firefighter, uh, come to firefighting, eventually they gather, you know, about twelve months to obtain that license, uh, during his own time, so the city, you know, then towards the training, uh, it hasn't, it hasn't been determined yet whether the firefighter himself will pay for that, that two thousand dollars for the city to pay, or details of that to work out here.
Uh, when, when this has come up in the past, the statement was made that, that would create a lot of overtime, because the, and that that would be a cost to the city, is that?
We decided that, that has to be accomplished on their all time, not going to be wanting to work, but we have to backfill it, to go back to accomplish that certification on their all time on their own, so it does not affect the thirty-one man minimum requirement, so of course the city can use time, and they have to do that within their probationary period, or they will not pass the probationary period.
So, they, they would do it after they're, they complete the cavity, did you say?
Yes, they would get the cavity, then they have twelve month probationary period slots, during that twelve months, they have to enter that certification program for their cardiac license on their own time.
And is that practical, given their lack of schedules?
They can, they can make it happen. Other, other municipalities have it as opposed to employment, so, and Rob, uh, the leader of all, does, so, uh, I mean, if they want to keep their job, they will make it happen.
Okay, well, um, one more question.
I, I want, if I could, to, 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 Councilman Sykes, just to shed some light on this, uh, C C R I offers that, uh, program, and I know one of the instructors, I spoke to him about this, and they have it, Steve, so that it, they do accommodate the different departments at different times, they may have one evening where they'll do it, and they'll have one afternoon where they'll do it, so they do accommodate different, uh, different schedules.
Great, thank you. So, they would have to have a regular, car, a regular, uh, EMT?
Upon, yes.
Upon?
Yes. In order to get hired, you need to have an EMT license, higher.
To get hired, is that before they have it, or after?
Before, yeah. They have that, they have that, they have that, and then they have all the money to get their EMT cardiac license.
Thank you.
Councilman Doris.
I just, I, um, this, I just want to let the members of, of the, um, the council know that this is still working progress, so again, this is something that, it's not a done thing, it's a wild, a major, non-scriptive thing, we're still a working group, and so we're welcome appointing what director, it was, I was talking to the last thing, I thought this.
Susan has been telling us, um, everyone more than welcome to come to the actual meetings. Um, one of the things that I did want to ask Dan, if possible, is that loan that we currently still have for the firefighters, will they still be able to take that as part of the, um, would you hire, can you still take that loan out, in the event that you just got hired in the fire department? Uh, we don't have?
We don't have the money to break up, from, to, 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 to.
We will, yeah, okay, we will fund the money for that loan, and, 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 in case, yeah.
Yeah, at least have the conversation, so, again, I think that both of you, for your time and your effort, I know this has not been, um, an easy summer, or the last few months, you know, with it, but I would like to, um, thank, uh, the police department as well, in helping us, uh, with the surveys that are going out, and you can probably let me, a little bit boring, the report, I won't skip ahead, um, but I'm, you know, pretty, pretty excited, uh, to work with, with everyone in the commission.
Council President.
Thank you, Council President. Just, as a follow-up to that, um, what is the fire department, is that going to, is that going to affect the fire department? Because from what I understand, everyone that's on duty has that, uh, certification, so will that, won't that affect manning, uh, the staffing, her dead?
That's a conversation that you have to have a union, so it's probably going to be something, uh, some aspects of that, I think, have to negotiate, and they have to be, uh, a different process for that training, for, 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 they're going to have that C, uh, so if that, that you need, they have to write, you need to, uh, go to, uh, that's the beginning, then you change, uh, how they staff people, uh, without having that C, so that's a, a part of the discussion.
And one other question, if they fail to get that certification at the end of the year, does the city fire them, is that?
Yes, and they, 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 they have no rights, uh, to, 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 to. And just sort of, Council President, you know, every bond that represents it, that , uh, basically, for this training.
Excellent, thank you, Director, that was something, uh, actually, we're hoping that at least one member of this department will get the racial equity training. And just so everyone knows, racial equity training was provided by, uh, we received throughout, uh, and, 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 the, 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 the,[1227.04] And I remember the diversity commission, that's put the time into the actually work to solve this issue. This is not just checking the box for us. This is true, Director, as you already said, it's about political will. We have the political will to make sure that we drive the diversity. So thank you very much. Thanks, Senator Business. Our captain, our next successor requests a appraisal of 41 Keith Avenue and 42 Sanders Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city is looking into selling that property. It's an old school that's been, the school doesn't know what it's worth. So it gets back to the city. And the condition of that slot is used in the building of the city. So it gets a lot of interest to sell property for the charter. It's a, and council, like, for the, for the, for that, by the way.
Did you, um, I'm putting your third one in, Craig, a little bit. I'm just going to use this word.
Yes, they were coming in that, uh, I was walking along.
Any other questions? Councilman Brady.
I'm just curious, because, uh, we were, Councilperson, once we do a praise and describe that it's probably an asset itself, what is the actual process of selling it?
What's that number to determine that we hired Pete and struck it if we walk to the public? And at that point, call it a viscerum in, at least that appointment. And we'll go to, uh, delegate at the game of hockey. And, um, we'll.
Seen none, voting opposed. You got detective investigations, fourth line special counsel. Et cetera, courts should be involved in handling. So make sure no questions on it. Please believe. Councilman Segal.
Yeah, I'm sorry, do we have to vote on the appraisal? It was like, we can vote on it.
I don't think we vote on it. I think we go on when we get to, uh, to, 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 to. It's informational, but I'll let the lawyers, you have to say that. Yeah, therefore, we're going to ask them.
All right, and could I just say that that building is, that building is right next to a city park? And do you think that the request or proposal needs to somehow address that? So that if it is sold, it's appropriate to that?
Yes, and I think our goal is to somehow incorporate, improving the definition of that property. We can somehow incorporate that, that whoever does take ownership of that property, if he's willing to, in speech, possible in the area, so we can somehow incorporate that. You know, if people are going to, um, I don't know the exact ruling of that right now, how we do that. But that's, I'm sure, is to incorporate the park into that from the perspective of the service.
But, but what would be for sale is just the school building now a park?
Correct.
Councilman Morris.
Let's just hold that for a minute and, uh, go. Especially thanks to, uh, uh, I don't know. It's also a thought about that, and that's why I'm, I'm going to have a market. So if you don't hear, keep calling.
Additional questions? Seen none. We have our executive vacations, four to nine, special hours consultants, students who charge fifteen dollars, five hundred quarters. Any questions? Seen no questions, so therefore, we need to go closed. An additional technical paper, we've seen none. Councilwoman President, in case you, I did have one more appointment to the charter review commission. I am appointing Matthew Schoolman, that was an executive for the tent. Additionally, I think it's always good at the beginning of the meeting to see a lot of students come in, uh, great across the city to help drive the margins to operate with students in the next arm. And secondly, you know, my father had a position that I'm lucky. It's always good to see people on the community striving to get awareness for disease states that don't get enough time and effort when those disease states are, are kind of out there. So I do want to appreciate everyone for coming out tonight. Earlier in the meeting, we had a very positive, positive, positive vibe going. And hopefully, we can do that better. Moving on.
Joe J, I just wanted to make mention that what you see on the agendas, the charter review commission, that all those meetings have a function to a corporate public comment. I know that Councilperson, Councilperson, Councilman Morris is here. And we're planning on perhaps taking this to different venues. We don't have a real lot of people come to City Hall. So I think I'll set it up like more in different, in different neighborhood sections. If anyone has an idea, they have a, do a lot of postponing. They have water, a good place to get a discussion on. Uh, that'd be great.
Thank you. I think William Library and food might be a location. I think that would be a lot of, a lot of people coming. Additionally, potentially, I think the transit, these could be okay. You should think about what you said, the, the, kind of said, oh, there's a lot. So I would like to report, council members who like to attend meetings. So you should, the library, which they have on the level and the east side of the school. I think we can spread this out, have some, in different places. I remember we read some of the mayor's requirements. Some of them are big changes to the charter that the city just did as long as the charter around. So we want to hear the public about some of these changes. And thank you, Attorney Richard Vaughn, for serving on the commission. I do appreciate it. I know you're a busy, busy person in your personal life and your business and your family. And the rule you so frustrates our attorney. So thank you for working and taking the lead on getting these schedules to be open to public, to be fair, sir. Councilman Newgate, Councilman Slayes, you're our first.
Thank you. The first thing I'd just like to mention is on that issue of when you sell property, uh, what needs to happen. I think if you look at, in the charter, you just look this up, three point oh eight point oh four oh F. And it's, uh, quite specific that it does have to go to, any sale of city property has to go to the retirement of F. Or, I'm just trying to get it here quickly so I can read it. But it's, it's pretty clear. Did I say three point oh eight? Anyway, I think, again, just under, uh, your revenue. I'll look for it while I talk about something else. But it is in there. What I'm handing around is a, is a report about the chemical fire that was in Cranston that the administration, Dan Perillo specifically, provided for me, to me, following the meeting we had six weeks ago with the mayor concerning the financial, likely financial situation of the city from the last fiscal year and how the chemical fire on Elmoan Avenue had a major, was a major hit for the city, both in terms of medical costs and backfilling fire positions for people who were out due to what happened in that fire. And what I'm suggesting is, strongly suggesting, is that the city should look at getting money from Prossus, the company, for the fire. Because according to this report from the, from N I O, which is the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, there's a lot of responsibility for what happened on the company. This wasn't just a, a lightning struck the building or something. And if you look on the third page of what I handed out, under incident, I've got it there, Mark, it says, firefighters entered the building and found an active fire burning in a chemical disposal vat. It was unclear what was in the vat due to missing or incomplete labeling and inventory documentation. And then if you go to the next page, where it says, our key findings, it says that, uh, fire department determined there was an alkaline substance. However, we were not able to identify all chemicals that may have been present due to incomplete or missing chemical labeling of contain, of containers at Company A, an incomplete tier-two chemical inventory list from Company A, limited post-event sampling of residual solid and liquid remnants at Company A. So according to this, and I don't know any more than what's in here. You know, these guys, the firefighters, walk into this building and there's a vat of chemicals on fire and nobody knows what's in the vat. So that had major health consequences for the firefighters. And I, I think the company, uh, the company screwed up. So from reading, going back and reading old newspaper articles on the fire, the article said two things that I thought were particularly interesting. One was that OSHA fined the company for, uh, poor record keeping after the fire. And the second was that the, the labor was Chief McKenna, estimated that the city lost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of equipment in that, in that incident. So even separate from the, the medical bills and the overtime costs due to this fire, are the equipment costs that, right now, the taxpayers are being expected to pick up. And I don't think we should be picking up, uh, we should be picking up those costs when the company clearly was negligent in its responsibilities to keep records, to label things. And there may be more details about their negligence, how the fires turned. So I, I did at the meeting six or seven weeks ago suggest this, of course, that, and the mayor, I don't know what the result of that suggestion was. And I would urge Mr. Perillo, Director Perillo, to pursue this and report back to the council on what's being considered.
Yes, we have a request from Councilman Slayes to review this report with the illustration that, of, of, back with the, the.
I vote. Briefly, I did speak to Solicitor Lawson when this incident happened. I know we've been sending Prossus a letter to their attorney regarding, trying to get some reimbursement from them. They denied any wrongdoing in that to us. And that, like you said, it became the city's ability to prove negligence on their part. And to this point, you know, we, we have a lot of evidence to go forward in a name suit against the company. We lost, as we said, a hundred and seventy-five thousand equipment. It was fifteen thousand dollars of overtime just for that event itself. And we're into a couple of hundreds of thousands of dollars of overtime and special expenses. The only reimbursement we got, again, right now, we hope, is from the U P A and that committed twenty-five thousand dollars. So, again, I'm determined, but I've been told that negligence in a situation like that is very difficult to prove by the city against a, a business. I'm sure this will help our case, but, I mean, that's why I was advised by Solicitor Lawson.
So to the director, if we need to have executive session next month, we think this will be the acting re-exist. Please let me know, so we can start it off. Moving on, we have, Councilman Don.
Thank you. I know the mayor's is still here. So regarding traffic obtained, I know that, you know, signs have been out. Last weekend, I was walking in the neighborhood behind, uh, Big No School. There was a, there was a patrol and then patrol officer there the entire time on auto, that, that field. I didn't see the police, no emergency, that people were like the traffic laws. But I know there's been more presence between signage, between patrol people out there. So I just want to say thank you to you all, to this department, for what you're doing, keeping everyone safe over there. And, and, uh, on that. Plastic production ordinance, information, just trying to get a general idea of, of, you know, July first, 2020, rolling out the plastic production ordinance, how we're going to go about making businesses aware, you know, how, how are we going to roll out this new program? And this new ordinance that's coming out of us?
I think we need to have a discussion on that. I don't think we really set down as an administration to say, okay, X, Y, and Z, in order to get this place, if I need some kind of rule or something, I think, to see how we're going to work on it. So that's a work in progress.
Do you, do you think the January council meeting? Do you think it's two months, is that it? Just to kind of get a, leave off on where we're at?
Well, I think the first, I think that goal, uh, if we're there by the one, be part of that process. That's the first step I mean. Councilmen, who want business owners, who we want at that table deciding how we're going to go. So I think that's especially, we need to have, uh, kind of offline to see who the bodies are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to the chair. I don't think you even know the address of every business in the city, it's, that, which you have to go through tax assessments, you have to pull them all out, and that may take just a month of this stuff. Councilman Morris.
Thank you, Council President. Being that Providence just implemented it, maybe we can pick their brain on how they went about, um, notifying the businesses and the residents as well.
I don't bet money they sent a fresh piece of the pro deal. Just put it out there. I don't see understanding, you know, money is any place. But I don't know, Councilman Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. You can have the, the US Act coming up online. The, uh, just in social media, you can get one of those ones to police one, the fire department, to, to, we get one to order you on the highway, or, or, I don't know, that may be enough to get a helping word up.
I'll make a video. Councilman Segal.
Who, who exactly would be responsible for enforcing the ordinance? Would it be the department inspections or the police?
I think initially, the, the enforcement is what our goal is. I mean, penalty-wise, I think it's more information on, like, the red on, candle, or use plastic, like, um, I think it's going to be citywide. Or obviously, police and inspection would be particularly in that. But truthfully, I haven't opened the ordinance right now for control. So I can't really give you any more, that's all.
All right, Councilman Brady, you're all sitting down. Councilman, then send it again, I, well, just, well, Brady, you guys have? Councilman Segal, you got it?
No, I just wanted to correct something I said earlier about what happened to the sale of property. That is, it's not in the charter, it's in the ordinance. And the ordinance number is three point oh eight point oh four.
Thank you, Councilman Morris.
Well, thank you. While I have the police department here, I just wanted to kind of, an F Y I, I was going to bring up the next public safety button. Race Street, which is our park app, I believe there's a sign that was taken down. At some point, they're going to go back up. It's, I believe there's a no parking section where the sign has either been faded or has been taken down. They're going to put it back up again. Not sure when, I think, the, the, I can consider it can. But I just want to give you a heads, a heads up in that the sign does happen to pop up. The other thing that I do have, Mr. President, I mean, none of the council information, or none of this is, but is there any, we get a conversation going as far as the process for the first position? Cause I know the equipment is up in January, or at my house, I'm thinking.
You know it is, uh, the process right now. And I can tell you, like, Pat and Maria, going out where her job description is. We're looking to post that in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, it's finished. I mean, I don't have a chance to touch things with her mind, but we're looking to create a job description, post a position externally. And you applicants, as they come in, she has, she will say, maybe in January, I comment that even if she were to, uh, still working at Gap as a woman for a few months, that the current staffing in the, in the department handles the work. We, uh, I'm going to meet with, uh, some, 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 so just to kind of talk about transition planning and things like that. So once we have a good idea, I can share it with you. We're trying to, just, I'm, 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 here to give you an overview. But I will email them, um, to, to you, you know, we, we have goals to make in over the transition process. And we will take applications for review and then decide who we want to bring in.
Thank you.
I will say, motion sent, all the new businesses are proper for me. For what to do?
So.
I have a motion for a second, a discussion. Seen none, but please take a vote on sending all the new businesses to the proper for me.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
There is, there is a reason to say, this one is one of our tests. Two thousand nineteen, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, class seven, I want to see you all this year. Next month, we're, uh, the city council next year. We're going to be here on Monday, or whatever, September fifth, two thousand nineteen, five, six, eight, after Halloween. I've seen this record of this race, one and a half thousand, three, four, three. I mean, it is actually. Have a wonderful Halloween, everyone, stay safe. Very selfish, and, and, and.
So.
All right.